Good evening and welcome, board members, participants, and interested parties to the May 28, 2025 meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. The board is now in session on a Zoom platform. We are calling the meeting to order at 6:31. I'm Amy Glassmeyer. I'm the chair of the Cohasset Planning Board tonight, and we'll be running the meeting as we implement Massachusetts Chapter 40A and Cohasset zoning bylaw. Present this evening on behalf of the Planning Board and our town planner and our legal counsel is Cassandra Thayer and Justin Perata. I will now take a roll call of the board members, and members, I will call your name, and you will please respond by repeating your name and saying present. I'll begin with Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, present.
Amy Glassmeyer, present. Kevin Heine.
President.
Jared Hobson, aye.
And Birgit Schmidt-Wieser, present.
All right, thank you. So I'll say a little bit about meeting processes, process procedures, and then we'll get right to it. So let's begin with a few directions to help with the meeting progression. First, if anyone in the audience has a question for the board, please put them into the Q&amp;A section at the bottom of the screen or use the raised hand function, and Cassandra Thayer, our planner, will let you into the meeting to speak. You want to start before you speak by putting your name and address into the Zoom. Please limit your discussion to three minutes, and we will be able to circle back to people who have additional comments. If you wish to ask additional questions, you're required to direct comments to me, and then I will facilitate answers to your comments and questions from the Planning Board members. You'll not speak directly to the Planning Board member. I will mediate the meeting's conversations. Tonight, we have a quorum of five members, including our newly-elected member of the board, Birgit. Did I not, did I not, oh, I apologize. I zoomed right by that. So, Birgit Schmidt-Wieser is also here tonight. We have only one item of business, and then we have administrative matters at the end of the meeting. We will reorganize the board at the end of the meeting in terms of leadership for the next year. I've asked Cassandra to read and discuss her report on the project that we'll be discussing, and then the applicant will speak. And then this evening, today, we received some information from the abutter, and so that the abutter will be asked to contribute comments. And then the Planning Board members will engage in discussion. So with no further ado, Cassandra, can you give your report on the A&R?
So the four members of the audience, the summary that I'm about to give is basically just a summary that was provided to the Planning Board members ahead of the meeting, just as a very brief summary of the proposed A&R. So this is a new application. Application is to divide the parcel into two new lots. The original lot is located on the public portion of Black Horse Lane with a very small connection to Westgate Lane on the rear of the lot.
All right, so is that your comments?
That was the entire summary.
Okay, thank you. Then can the applicant be brought up and provide us with insight onto the project? And hopefully, each of the members of the Planning Board will have a copy of the map that is a part of the report.
Yep, so Brendan Sullivan is here from Merrill Engineering. And Brendan, if you need me to promote anybody else, just let me know.
I don't think anybody else is here. Maybe Tom Hamilton or Brian Keane. If they're not there, then...
No, I don't see them.
We can just move forward. So for the record, Brendan Sullivan with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, Registered Professional Land Surveyor and Engineer. Do you mind if I pull up the plan so I can show everybody?
That'd be great.
Please.
Yep.
So if you can all see that. So as Cassandra said, this is a, it's this lot here being broken up into lots one and lot two, both of them having frontage on the public portion of Black Horse Lane. There was a small, just under six-foot, I'm sorry, just under eight-foot connection onto Westgate Lane. There's a number of easements, access easements over this 50-foot access easement, a northerly portion of lot, proposed lot one. There's a scenic easement over here. There's also a waterline easement that goes down towards Westgate Lane and loops around. There's also some wetlands located that were flagged and located on the southerly portion of the property. Both lots have in excess of, as you can see, 56,000 square feet of upland. Lot two has approximately 61,000 square feet of upland. And as I said, both have access in frontage on Black Horse Lane. I'm sorry, this is in residential District B. So 35,000 square feet required. Lot one has 64, lot two has about 175. A lot of that is wetlands on lot two.
Can you provide a little bit more detail regarding the condition of the site and the expectation of the consequence of the A&R? Because if you, I think everybody can see, this is a site that has a significant amount of wetlands. It has a couple of easements, and it is going to have some challenges when it relates to the ability to deal with wetlands in the 50-foot and 100-foot buffer. So if you can give us a little bit more detail in terms of what your assessment is, that would be helpful.
Sure, so there's an existing driveway that comes up, this 50-foot wide access easement that accesses the Stones' property up to the, I guess not the, to the east. So that existing driveway will probably most likely be upgraded to a common driveway to access lots one and two. It was already a driveway there. So, you know, with the pre-existing condition of a driveway there, that would include access to lots one and two. This scenic easement is an easement over the Stone property for views to the, towards the harbor and towards the Gulf River. This waterline easement, I'm not even sure there's a waterline in that easement. It's an old easement that was shown on the original subdivision plan that was done back in, oh, 1977-ish or so. And I think that's about it. Is there any more clarification I can give?
So to sort of fill in the story about the water easement, my understanding is that this could end up being a water supply avenue for the area surrounding the easement, and it's, is going to be both a challenge and it's going to be expensive, but it is something that is likely to be activated at some point. So that's important for us to consider.
Okay, just to briefly, so the buildable areas is probably like right about where the lots are labeled. So lot one, buildable area would be up in this area, lot two would be in this area here. Perhaps the, because as soon as the water line, the water easements do come from basically the dead end of Black Horse Lane, what was a dead end, and then over towards Westgate, which the board's recently familiar with, but the end of Black Horse Lane has been developed, 94 Black Horse Lane. And we've since, as recently as last week, submitted a notice of intent to loop the end of Black Horse Lane over to Cedar Lane, which would then loop it over to South Main Street to give better flow and clarity for the water. So maybe this waterline easement was kind of an indication of maybe to loop it through Black Horse over to Westgate. But there's even going to be a bigger loop that's already in progress at the end of 94 Black Horse Lane, the subdivision of three or four additional lots down there. We're planning to loop that over in cooperation with the Water Department over to Cedar Lane to close that loop so that there'll be some, you know, less dead-end water mains over there.
All right, so then...
Just a quick addition, Amy, as far as I understand and have experienced, this, what you call the water easement, right now is used as, you know, kind of the walkway. You know, it's a nice trail through the bush from Black Horse Lane over into Westgate Lane, so to walk your dog.
Okay, so that's another piece of information. Thank you. So this afternoon, we received a notification from an abutter and has some information that would be useful to us, and also I'm particularly interested in the perspective of the abutter in light of the fact that the properties are very close to one another, on top of one another. So Cassandra, could you please elevate the abutter? And please say your name and introduce yourself.
He's rejoining now.
Yeah.
We can. Yep, so my name is Peter Stone, and I am the owner, my wife and I are the owner of 39 Black Horse, and the easement, which we know as our driveway, is the area that I were obviously concerned about how it's used in terms of access. I sent an email that outlined our concerns in terms of how that driveway would possibly be used to become kind of a common easement for where these two proposed dwellings might be. I think it would be imperative that there's a walkthrough, because if you look at, if you're on Black Horse Lane, walking up the driveway, and you see how the wetlands, you know, start to come very close to our easement, there's a significant drop, which means that you're dropping into a wetlands area. I don't see how that elevation can be possibly made accessible without using our easement as a common easement. And that would be, I think, our, you know, greatest concern, because as I understand it, there's a concern with a burden of using an easement for access for construction and then ultimately for the use as a residential property. And it looks like the proposal here is to try to use our easement to create a common driveway for not only our property, but these two additional properties that are being proposed. The other concern is that my wife and I went to the Olmstead facility approximately a year ago, and that Olmstead was able to, Olmstead was involved in the design of all of the landscape around what was the Bigelow property, and it's, you know, it's quite clear, it's quite clear that it's a historical landmark that would be considered part of, I think, the history of the town of Cohasset. So I think those are our major concerns to not only protect our property, but to make sure that the easement is not used as, you know, kind of a common driveway.
Hi, I'm Midstone, Peter's wife. So my concern is that it is historically significant, and I was just up there, and it is just a beautiful area for the whole town of Cohasset. People, when I was going up the driveway, they were running through the path. People cut there to the harbor. It's just beautiful. And then we have lived there for 40 years, since 1991, and there's a considerable amount of water that runs off. After the last storm, we had to have people come in and insert gravel because it gets these drainage problems, and we can provide pictures and everything. There's a huge issue with water. And where these lots are going to be is where the water runs down. And it's an issue, but we're up high enough that it doesn't affect our home, but it affects our driveway a lot. And the other abutter is Lynn Baranowski, and I think she would attest to the fact that the driveway is a mess from the water after a storm. And we went to the Bigalos last year, and we have a lot of historical documents to see how significant this piece of property is. And it, you know, in the Planning Board, I know they consider the community and how valuable it is to the people in the town, and I think that's something to consider also.
All right, thank you very much for that. And just one minute, Clark, and then I'll turn to you. Mr. Perata, this discussion of the abutter property and the relationship between the abutter property and the Olmstead identification, we haven't really had a chance to even consider this. None of us, I think Birgit was indicating she had actually seen it, but from the standpoint of trying to think through what a good decision would be, we have to start with the fundamentals. And one of the fundamentals is the adjacent property. And so what does this historical land identification mean to an A&R?
To the extent it's on an abutting property, nothing. What may be relevant is, and I'm a little, I was a little confused by the discussion of the easement, I'm looking at it right now. If, I guess my first question, and I don't know who can answer this, who owns the land that the easement's on?
The Stones, the Stones do.
So the property that's being, seeking to be A&R?
Nope, the abutting property. So the Stones' house is up in this area, they have a 50-foot strip that runs down here, and their frontage is on Black Horse Lane here.
Gotcha.
This is all of their property here, which was part of the original subdivision that John Keane did here, whose, Brian Keane is now a descendant of John Keane, who subdivided this whole piece back in 77.
Okay. So the first sort of question is, if that's going to be used as access, does the lot to be A&R have the legal right to use that? And the board certainly can inquire into that. I didn't see anything in the file to indicate that that was, you know, and I believe you that it's there, but I didn't see anything in the file, you know, a deed or covenant or something like that that would establish the right to use that, if that's going to be used for access for both of those lots. To the extent there's some sort of historic relevance to that area, and that's the, that's the land that's going to be used prospectively for access to both these lots, I think that's something that the board can consider. Because ultimately here, there's really only two issues for the board. Does these, do both these properties that are sought to be A&R have frontage on a public way, sufficient frontage or some other type of way? It appears here that they do. And then the second question is, is access to the lots real or illusory? And there are cases that examine situations like this where the buildable portion of a lot is upland from a wetland. And, you know, imagine for a second that the easement wasn't there, and access was going to have to traverse through this wetland somehow. That's certainly something the board can consider as to whether or not there is realistic access to the buildable area of the lot. It gets a little bit tricky where access is sought to be used from another place, in other words, not from the actual frontage that the lot has on, or at least one of the lots has on, the public way. And there, the board, you know, you sort of have to look at both things, and there's cases that say, well, even if there's alternative access, prospective access from the frontage, in other words, through the wetlands, would be so impossible that access there is illusory and the A&R can't be endorsed. So you kind of have to balance the two things together, and the better, so to speak, the alternative access, maybe the more forgiving the board can view what would be prospective access through the wetland, or in other words, via the actual frontage. And you kind of have to look at those things together. But the initial inquiry is over, is always, would the buildable area of the lot actually have frontage from, or I'm sorry, access from the frontage area if that was required? And I know that was a little primer on the way this works, I hope that was, that was...
No, that was good. Okay, so I'm sure we'll be talking to you more, but Clark, I want to go alphabetically, Clark Brewer.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I was going to make those points that Justin outlined so cohesively, and A&R is two things, adequate frontage and access that's not illusory. And it's, I mean, looking at the plan, it provided that the, that what's indicated as a 50-foot wide vehicle and pedestrian easement, that though, that these two properties or the existing single property has deeded access rights to that easement, then it could be used for access to these two parcels. Well, you know, the town, we have a common, it would then be a common driveway instead of a single person's driveway. I don't think it would be reasonable for the Stones to have to pay for the upgrade to create a common driveway. But the big question here is, is there deeded access right along this 50-foot way of the Stones' property for the original parcel?
You mean the combined lot one and two?
Well, we, yeah, the original parcel is lot one and two prior to our endorsement, right?
Correct.
So presumably, that there has to be deeded rights somehow to this one and two lot, the existing, the existent lot of this easement, or the frontage doesn't really provide, it provides illusory access because of the wetlands, right?
Right.
So Brendan, in your deed research, did you, did you find definitively a deed that allows this access on Stones' property?
Yes, it's in the deed.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then presumably the applicant of building anything on these two lots would come before the Planning Board with a common driveway application and would bear the, whatever the costs are, knowing that it's somebody else's property.
Can I comment on that?
All right.
If I could comment on that, in the deed, the access to our driveway, when it was the Keane's property, that that access was granted. When the Keane property was sold to Lynn Baranowski, and there was a separation of these, you know, different lots, there's no clear language that clearly says that the access was limited to or defined by the lot that was acquired by Lynn Baranowski and not having access to what was once lot number five and is now being kind of recategorized as lot number one and lot number two. So there is language in that deed that granted the Keane's access to the easement, that's correct.
Okay, so Kevin, I think you're next.
Well, I'm going to defer to counsel. Is access that's granted and written onto a deed to a specific party transferable to a new party, which it sounds like in this case is what's sought here or has occurred? That's beyond, I think, the information that's presented to us, but is that a condition of what's in front of us with regard to the decision? We have to make, if we don't know that information?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, the vast majority of the time, I'd say 99% of easements are what's called a pertinent to the land, meaning they run with the land and a subsequent owner has rights in them. Sometimes you see what's called an engrossed easement, which is, which is granted just to a particular individual. Again, not having the deed or whatever, whatever document the easement was created in, it's, you know, we don't know for sure. But certainly, it could be that the new owner has benefit of the easement.
And Brendan, do you have any information that would enlighten the specifics with regard to the easement? Is it one that would run with the land? Is that your understanding of your client's understanding or as written?
Yeah, I mean, typically, the easements, unless they're extinguished, it's not a license which, you know, only goes with the owner. It is an easement, so easements typically run in perpetuity.
Brendan, did you get that?
I'm sorry, yes? Did you, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. I'm not sure you heard me. My question was whether you have any information, whether the easement is running with the land or the conditions of such.
I mean, I'd probably pull up the deeds if I looked for them, but typically, easements run in perpetuity with the property, unlike a license which would expire or something, you know, for a certain ownership. But typically, easements run in perpetuity with the property, they're not, they're, they are transferable.
Yeah. They're like, they're forever. Typically, easements are forever, and they don't get extinguished, generally speaking, unless there's specific language for that.
So but right now, it sounds like we don't actually have that documentation for ourselves. Is that correct? We don't have that in our files, on our records.
Well, the plan, the site plan indicates that there's an easement, a vehicle easement. It just doesn't identify, you know, that, and it appears there's dominant and sub, what is, Justin, a subservient?
Yeah, so the owner of the, yep, so the owner of the land is the subservient parcel, assuming it is what's called an pertinent easement, the property that has the right to it is the dominant parcel.
Right.
You know, the applicant mentioned the license, and that's true, a license can be, we may have the deed there. There is, there is such thing, there is such a thing that's called an engrossed easement, which means it is a deasement, but it's only granted to a particular person. Again, it's pretty rare, but you never know.
Well, that would be information beyond the scope of what's in front of us and the decision that we have to make on tonight, but for the holders and abutters to look into the details with regard to that, if they so wish, with regard to their rights to limit or to, you know, acknowledge and recognize that, you know, an easement, as has been said here multiple times, typically the land and stay in effect in perpetuity. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, so we're going to keep that item alive and talk about it further down the road. Ms. Hobson, would you like to add comments?
I mean, I understand what we're dealing with, with the A&R, sufficient frontage, and is the access to the lot real? and is the access to the lot real? I'm sorry if I didn't hear this. There's no access to these lots from West Gate Lane. They have to cross another piece of property. Is that my understanding?
Um, not necessarily. Uh, lot one has access over its frontage, and that's actually where the stones get their front to get their access from. Um, if I can pull up this, can you see the new plan I pulled up?
Yeah, we can.
This is the this is the original subdivision plan, so we would to, you can see that that was done in nineteen seventy-seven. This was the original Keen's property, the Keen's owned six A, they owned lot eight, lot seven A. Um, and this lot five A, which is the five A is the lot we're subdividing now. Um, so here is the, here's the fifty foot wide vehicle and access easement number four. Um, starts down a black horse lane and runs up and it ends, it terminates um at this point up here. Uh, now you can see down here, the existing driveway, which is still follows that path from nineteen seventy-seven. There's a vehicle and pedestrian accident easement number five, uh, which is where the stones cross, you know, onto over the Keen's property today to get to their property. Um, so is there access from from the front to down to this property? Yes, there is.
So it's it's an option to go from West Gate Lane.
Um, West Gate, uh, not really. It it there's a leg, there's a leg down there that's only about, it's it's less than eight feet wide. Um, I believe it's seven um. Yes, oh, seven, seven and a half feet. So it's, you can build, and you can walk through it, but you
Okay.
wouldn't be able to drive down there.
Okay. Excuse.
Okay, just make a a point. If you keep that plan up, Brendan. So so this um, the 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 driveway right now goes across the one of the parcels that um we're talking about A and Ring, right? That
Yes.
That so it's 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 partly on um uh lot one from the previous plan and and partly on this this con- this detailed easement.
Yes.
And and it the easement could be an easement for anybody in town, or it could be specific to this lot five A.
Uh, yes, but it's it's specific to lot five A, and I think even lot six A as well.
Yep. Okay. Sorry, uh, Deidra, I don't know if you were done.
No, it's okay, Clark. I I was done. I just
All right.
I'm just concerned about the wetlands.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about that in just a minute. So Birgit, would you like to uh weigh in on this?
Yeah, so I um, I I walked up there this this Sunday, and I mean, I I know it from walking um um quite a bit. Um, the easement um does not correspond to the current driveway, to the current, to the size of the current driveway. The current driveway is um, I'd say at most twenty feet um uh wide, if if at all. Um, it's very, very narrow. Um, and then um I do understand that after a storm like we had uh last week, it it must be, you know, kind of quite difficult to um, you know, kind of maneuver um along that that, you know, kind of part of driveway. So um any any access, if we have to go with, you know, kind of this is the only way to to access those parcels, because the other um from West Gate Lane, you know, and kind of uh uh sorry, from Black Horse Lane directly, th- there is no way. This is um pretty non, you know, kind of transpossible, you know, kind of um or um uh land. There is, you know, I would say it is, it is uh not possible to access from Black Horse Lane directly. So the only option we would have is from um the current easement, which we do see on paper, which we do not see, you know, kind of in reality, because the driveway, as I said, is, and I I'm I'm sure the um 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 the the butters on on uh Black Horse Lane thirty-nine, um Peter and his wife can assure, you know, and kind of confirm that there would be significant work to be done to make that accessible for for those three properties then, but also for the in just the construction uh traffic that will have to go into building the two houses um. And then, you know, kind of with all of the 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 question of, you know, kind of um damage that could be done to it, mitigation and so on. So it's it's a very um tricky situation.
Um, okay, so um, so we're, so we understand that we have a complicated um easement issue, and we, I want to return now and and have Brendan talk us through, uh, if we could have the first map brought up, I'd like to talk about the wetlands, because um, in this instance, the amount of land that actually might be developable on those two lots uh uh could in fact not be that significant. And the reason is because of the intensity and extensiveness of the wetlands. And so from the standpoint of the situation and for the achievement of the highest value of the pro- two properties, it would make sense to actually step back and actually figure out how much space you have and how much of it can use and how much of it is virtually going to be unusable. Because you might think, if I was an owner of a property like this, and I wanted to maximize the value of my property, I'm I would actually want to know how much I would lose in the way of building potential. And the building potential is uh really an extensive issue. So for example, um, in in one of the properties, there's going to be a requirement from Concom to do an assessment. And when they do the an assessment in a situation like this, there's going to be a set of questions that are very extensive, and it could actually end up being the case that the the property itself, um, it looks bigger and more substantial, but in fact, when you put the wetlands in to the situation, then you end up with the problem of there not being actually um lots of the same size or similar sizes, and also the ability to build what a size of a house, somebody might want to put on each one of these lots. And so um I personally feel that um until we have a better understanding of the the wetland situation, um, we really need to to um, I mean, it's in in some ways, it's not our our duty to to say one way or the other about the wetlands, but what I'm suggesting is the risk involved in having properties which have an illusionary sa- scale to them. Because if it turns out that the Concom looks at it and starts to make assessments of the situation, it could involve things like not being able to have a very big footprint and not a- being able to have a whole set of things which people want on their properties. For exam- and you'd have to start by measuring things like relevant building setbacks and showing all the wetland buffers and calculating the encumbered and uh encumbered and unencumbered properties on each lot and uh estimating the propos- the pro- you know, possible size of a house that they could plan on. And then after that, if they could figure that one out, they'd then ha- also have the challenge of figuring out what kind of a driveway, how big, whether they want stone walls, maybe not, they can't, they may not be able to have lawns, they might have to have specialized um landscaping, and it's not clear whether or not uh one of these properties would be able to have a swimming pool or patio or sheds. So my my feeling is that um where we are now, we're at a perfect point to make a better analysis of what's possible before we actually make an A and R.
It excuse, e- excuse me, Karen Glassmeyer. Just a a quick point. All of those things are definitely relevant to development of a plan, a hundred foot buffer, fifty foot buffer, what's what's hardscape, what's what's lot coverage, setbacks, um, footprint, swimming pool, all that stuff. But A and R is a limited review. It's 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 frontage being adequate and conforming to zoning, and it's access not being illusory. And we see there's a there's a, there's a driveway that what's proposed to be uh at some point, a common driveway that would have to be modified to accommodate possibly two additional lots. That's that seems, and and the planning board does approve common driveways. We review, so if any changes were to occur, and they would have to, if it's more than one house, I think a common driveway with two, up to two houses can be just twelve feet. But once you go to the third house, then it has to be upgraded. Um, so but what I see, there's an existing um, an existing driveway. The applicant wouldn't need a new driveway. They would just need it reconfigured a little bit. So the access doesn't appear to be illusory, and the frontage meets zoning. And and that's where our A and R review ends. They may, they could come back for large home review and show us the fifty hundred foot buffer zones and and what's developable and what isn't, but our our review is limited. And maybe um counsel could could weigh in on this, uh reinforce what I've just said.
Yeah, I mean.
Fine.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that that's correct. The issue of the wetlands and where a house could be built is relevant or can be relevant to analyzing whether or not the access is illusory. So it it certainly can be an element of that. The other, the other, only other wrinkle on an A and R is a situation where the factors are met, but one of the lot is, lots is not going to be buildable. And there, the A and R still should be granted, but maybe with a note that says one lot isn't buildable.
Yeah, we've seen that. Yep.
Yeah, but but even in that instance, it's limited really to lot size. I would be really surprised if if the zoning bylaw um took into account wetlands in determining lot size. I don't know the the zoning bylaw well enough, since I don't usually work with that, but i- assuming, assuming there's no issue with the lot itself being buildable in terms of its size, then it wouldn't need that type of notation. And where a house may or may not go, again, is just limited to the question of whether the access is illusory. And as I explained, it's a, you know, it can be a difficult inquiry for the board, because, yes, you have to examine this driveway. And by the way, A and Rs can be granted subject to any improvement. But if the board got to the point where they felt like we're comfortable with this access over the easement, but we'd like to see certain improvements before that's done, or or the A and R could be granted, you know, just like a, just like a subdivision, it can sort of be held until those improvements are made. Um, um. But even where that, even in that situation where the alternative access is deemed by the board to be accessible, or, you know, good and satisfactory, it's still, there's still instances where the board should take into the count, well, let into account if that access didn't exist, is the access from the frontage completely impossible? And if it would be completely impossible, then that may be a factor to by which the board would deny the endorsement. And relevant there again is where is the actual house going to go? And I agree, we don't have a lot here. I appreciate the applicant sort of explaining where the house might be, and I I sort of assume that based on where the wetlands were. Um, um, so I think that's the, that's the importance of the wetlands on what would be lot two. Uh, how in how in real world terms would it affect the access if if there was no alternative access? Um, um, and if the answer to that is in, and and it is rare, but if the answer to that is is it would absolutely be one hundred percent physically impossible, then generally, alternative access, even in those instances, is insufficient.
So, um. Point that's related to that is the is the access for um lot two goes through the ac- goes through lot one. While there's no um language that covers, that covers uh the ability to provide uh to use the fifty foot right away or access easement for lot two, there's no language that that allows that, but presumably because it's under common ownership, that the a deed would be created that would allow that access through lot one to lot two, where it doesn't appear to exist now.
Correct. And and I and I do think it would be reasonable to put that on the plan. I you sort of, sort of, that's the assumption.
This plan?
Yeah, I mean, certainly if that's, if that, if, again, the more the applicant can show of how is it real world access going to happen here, I think that that makes it easier for the board. And certainly, if it's a perfect, it's an excellent point. One of the questions is, okay, great, I drive down the easement, and that gets me to lot one, but how do I get over to lot two?
You you're right. If if the driveway that was shown in the previous plan we saw was shown on this plan, I think it would be a little little easier to evaluate it for as an A and R. And I, that's my feeling right now. But it's not shown here.
Yeah, I I agree with that, Clark, but I also agree that a simulation of the actual size of the dwelling is also relevant here.
I don't, I think it's outside of A and R. I mean, frankly, the lots could be unbuildable for some reason that we haven't considered, or that the applicant hasn't considered, even though they get uh divided.
That, that's true. I- if, when I say unbuildable, if they're unbuildable from a zoning perspective, meaning they're not big enough or they don't have enough frontage, then the type of notation I referenced would need to be added. Whether or not for a real world expect perspective, there's enough buildable envelope to make it viable, or whether or not there's wetlands, where a house could go. But again, that's only relevant to the extent part of what the board has to do here is figure out in a real world sense, how you're going to access the buildable envelopes. But I don't disagree that that might be helpful to at least show here's where we expect the house to go in a general area. Here's how we're going to get access to both the build, the buildable area on both these lots. And if it's going to be this easement, you know, how much information can we provide to the board about how actually, what that's going to look like legally, actually, realistically, both to get from Black Horse Lane to the buildable areas and to get over to lot two from lot one?
Uh, that's, that's my sense too. It is, this is an un um i- i- the documentation is insufficient to actually feel a sense of assurance that this is going to work and it's going to be good for all the parties involved. And since we can in fact do that, that would be my recommendation, that we uh continue this and get a better sense of exactly what can be done.
Uh, I would also like.
Ask the applicant.
Wait, 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 let's not, I have to. I think Clark was first and Birgit is second.
Yeah, just a technical detail. We would ask the applicant to extend the twenty-one deadline, day deadline again, and then give them specific instructions about how to label the easement and to show uh the existing driveway.
All right. Um, Birgit, and then I would like to let the uh butter also have a comment.
And and just, you know, kind of um clear um clarification of, you know, and kind of the um legal status of the easement. Um, I think it was briefly um shown here, but, you know, kind of that would be very helpful information for us as well to see, you know, kind of what is the legal rights on on using um the easement to begin with as a possible access for from from West Lane, uh, Black Horse Lane.
Yeah, I think we'd want the applicant engineer to submit that um when they do.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Exactly. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Um, so now I'd like to lis- let Mr. Stone um speak.
Hey, well, thank you for all of your attention. Uh, we really do appreciate it, and certainly we're get gaining a better understanding, which is helpful. Um, we as a um small community, when John Keen was still alive, uh, had to uh get get our own sewer line hooked up from the beginning of uh what is our easement. So I guess that's another question in terms of access to the sewer that was originally um hooked uh in privately and uh would certainly have to be taken into consideration um if in fact lot one and lot two as two uh potential residents are going to um want to be hooked into town sewer via the existing uh linkup that we have. Um, the easement, as I stated, and I did review the deed, was uh clearly used by um the residents uh who were in Keen's property. And um, you know, we certainly understand. you know, we certainly understand that it's, if it's transferable to perpetuity, that that's a legal issue. I would really ask the board to look at some of, uh, what is, uh, defined in the Olmstead files in the historical, uh, markings that show, um, topographical and, uh, landscape design that does go back to, um, the years of eighteen ninety-three through nineteen oh one. So again, I thank the board for listening to our concerns and look forward to, um, hearing what your, um, next steps are, um, to preserve that property. Yeah, we would really like you to go and take a look at, at the property as well.
I think a walkthrough for as many of us that could do that would be a good idea. So Brendan, we clearly are asking you, um, first off, we're going to ask um, the applicant to extend the time that we have to investigate this situation. Second, um, it would be terrific to have a really, really good detailed, fine-grained map. Because there's a lot of, just, just now, we just heard of a sewer that we didn't even know existed. So, um, we're in a situation in which we just don't have enough insight, and to do a good job, that's what we need.
Sure. So, um, the sewer that, um, Mr. Stone was speaking of actually doesn't go down from what I recollect, doesn't not go down this, um, common driveway, though the driveway. The sewer easement goes over to the Smith property and down Black Horse Lane out the back of his house. Um, so there would be, have to be sewer installed in this, uh, driveway. And that would be, that would connect to the, um, the existing sewer in Black Horse, uh, which is a public sewer. It's it might end, there's a, there's a manhole, a gravity manhole right around somewhere where it's labeled Black Horse Lane up there, and that's where the public part of it ends. Um, and I think the rest of it, the, the rest of that is private. Um, as far as preparing, I will get, certainly, um, i- if Mr. Stone can get me the Olmstead stuff, I could certainly look at that. Um, historically, as, you know, um, councilors advise as well, really does not have a, really a play in this. Um, I've been doing formas for forty years now. I've never had a site walk for a forma. I will provide some additional information for the easement. Um, I'm, you know, I.
In the driveway, in the driveway.
In the driveway, yep. Um, we, we, we have no idea what's going to be built up here. Is it going to be a two thousand square foot house? Is it going to be a ten thousand square foot house? I don't know. And I'm not going to propose something, because I never have I put a proposed house on a forma plan. I can certainly give you a buildable circle that would, that would encumber this area here, that would say, okay.
That'd be great.
Um, the easement, I don't think the easement is actually necessary because it's, it's going to matter where the house goes on lot one. Maybe the house on lot one goes back here. And then the easement would go around this side of lot one to get to lot two. Maybe the house for lot one goes up here and the easement for lot two would be down below the water easement. I'd rather not show that and be, and, you know, and have, you know, lot one encumbered at this point, not knowing where the development's going to go. Um, we have access in this easement up to this point here. Um, so that's where the end of the scenic easement is. That's where the end of the pedestrian and vehicle ask, acts, access easement is. Um, as far as detailed plans, um, I, 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 I don't think they, that's prudent at this point. Um, because the homeowner is not developing these properties. He's most likely going to sell them and have someone else in there. So as if, as opposed to putting, uh, and I'd, I'd rather not show a footprint with a pool and a deck and a house and a lawn area. How many trees are going to be cut down and ledge? And that's all under the storm on a bylaw and the common driveway application that will probably most likely be submitted if these two lots are developed.
Well, you know, for the ultimate developer, it, it would be great to incorporate the features that Olmstead has designed. I mean, he's on the father of landscape architecture. And his works are significant. So if it's possible to design it, but again, it's outside the purview of the A and R. Wha- what we would do is we would ask for a twenty-one day extension and presumably get you on the, um, agenda for the eleventh of June, our next meeting. Um, and if you don't want to give us an extension, I, I think we would deny the A and R right now. We would deny endorsement. If you do not want to give us the extension.
No, I'm, I'm not looking for a denial. I, I, I'll look for an extension, of course.
Well, then if you, you agree, then I don't think we have to continue this, because it's, while it's a hearing in public about an A and R, it's not a public hearing. Justin, if you could just weigh in on the mechanics.
You don't need to continue this, but you do need written agreement from the applicant to continue to extend the time to issue a decision.
Can I just say, we really.
I mean, you could vote to continue it just from a agenda perspective.
Right.
All right.
It does no harm to continue the discussion.
I, I just want to say, I really appreciate all the, uh, Butters' concerns. Um, some that have not spoken tonight as well as, as, uh, the people who have. Um, and stay involved, because we only have so much purview at this point with an A and R. But if there's a development coming back to us at some point, that's when your concerns are going to be invaluable. So please stay involved. Do not, I know you won't let this go. So unfortunately, we have two ways to deal with an A and R. We can continue this, which is what I'm supporting at this point till we get a little fuller um, clarified view and plans from Mr. Sullivan. But I just want the Butters to know that we, we do hear you. Thank you.
Um, so, uh, Brendan, um, what's the, what's the possibility that you could um, give us some insights into the, uh, consequence of the wetlands?
As, as far as what?
Well, I mean, from the standpoint of, of, um, the long-term interest of somebody owning these two properties. Well, when, if, when and if they become two properties, they're currently one right now. Um, I guess I'm, I'm, you know, it's, the wetlands are so extensive that, um, you, you know, in some ways, w- we could have benefited from having the Concom look at this first before we did.
That's not how it works. No.
I, I, so, so we're, we're in residential B, resident district. The required area is thirty-five thousand square feet. Um, in Cohasset, the only land that's not subject to that, not allowed in that area, is below elevation four point five along the coast. Um, lot one has an area of sixty-four thousand square feet, has fifty-six thousand square feet of upland, almost twice the, uh, buildable or required area. Lot two has a hundred and seventy-five square feet of, of land and has over sixty-one thousand square feet of upland. Um, so, you know, there is, I mean, I, I, I understand your concern. If there was wetland up here and there was only, and there was only five thousand square feet of upland in lot two, I'd say, yeah, there, there'd be a questionable area there where you could develop, but there's clearly area up here to develop both of these lots.
Okay. So, um.
Amy Cassandra has her hand raised and, 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 uh, so does Kevin.
Oh, I can't see either one of them. So, Cassandra, and then, um, who else is got their hand up?
Kevin.
Okay.
My question was just a technical question about the, um, process for continuing it for Justin. So Kevin, if you wanted to pose your comment or question first, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Um, for an A and R, is it just a majority or, or does it need to be, um, what, what's the voting? Is it, is it majority vote or is it, um,
Unanimous.
Something, does it need to be unanimous or something between?
Majority.
Okay. And then, um, your points are well taken with regard to wetlands, um, um, Ms. Chair, but, um, I think that's beyond the scope of our A and R, and that's going to be in front of other boards, should they get the A and R approval at a successive meeting to this. And, you know, they can put together the plans, but how much traction they get and the viability of them is on to the property owners. And that's outside the scope of what's in front of us now and will be in front of us again, um, with the extension, uh, should it be granted by, um, Mr. Sullivan. Uh, I'll leave it at that. And I, and to Deidre's point too, with regard to a butter staying in the process, stay in the process, not just with planning board, but, but with other boards in the approval of them. Um, and Concom evidently is going to be an important part of that, given the wetlands and the extent of them in this area. That's all I have.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I'd be happy to ask my question now if it's a good time.
Say that again, please.
I said I'd be happy to ask my question now if it's a good time.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, so I guess it's partly a question for Brendan and partly a question for Justin. So the current extension runs until this upcoming Friday. Um, Brendan, do you think that you would be able to get a signed extension agreement by then?
Uh, yes. Does it have to come from the homeowner or does, can it come from me?
I believe it needs to come from the applicant.
Okay, um.
Which is why I was like.
Is that the owner of record?
Uh, yeah.
I would, I would most likely be able to get that. He, I, I believe he's still overseas, so, but, um, I could, I could def, I could probably have it by Friday.
So, just to be clear, just to be clear, here's, here's what happens if, if that doesn't happen.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah. So if that doesn't happen, and and I know there is a, there is a typo in the extension. It says March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, but I think everybody agreed that it's supposed to be May thirtieth, two twenty-five. The board would have to either, if the board took no action by then, and there was no extension, that the A and R would be what's called constructively granted, meaning it's granted without a vote of the board. If that didn't happen and the board was, didn't want to, want the application to be constructively granted, it would have to reconvene and vote on it one way or the other. Uh, before, before, before Monday, basically. What's that?
On Friday.
On Friday, yeah. And as you said earlier, because this isn't a public hearing, it needs to be done pursuant to the open meeting, but it doesn't need to be noticed as a public hearing.
Which we would be past the forty-eight hour deadline for that, correct?
But Justin, there is another option. We could ask the applicant to, um, withdraw the, um, the plan.
Yes, you could do that as well.
And, and then submit it at, in anticipation of our, whatever next meeting makes sense. And, and maybe that's the prudent thing here, because we're, we're stuck. We're at forty-eight hours to, to Friday afternoon. And, uh, Brendan's saying that is his applicant, owner of records out of town or, or whatever.
I, I would be okay with withdrawing. Um, I would just maybe ask that.
Without prejudice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Upon another, um, application that the fees be waived?
That's fair. That's unfair.
Yeah, I mean.
So how do we configure this, um, on a narrative basis? What do we actually say?
You, you mean, do we take a vote as a board, or do we just say, we, we came up with an agreement during a meeting and uh, the applicant agreed to withdraw the, the plan and for, for resubmit it next summer.
Yeah. Okay.
Justin, do you have any suggestion for us here?
No, I mean, I still, I still wanted, I, I'd still like to see it in writing from the, it, it, you know, I think the, the applicant's representative is here and orally is, is okay, but I think a, a written, a written, um, a written withdrawal without prejudice of this application. You know, the board certainly, I think, I think the applicant understands what the board is looking for. The board certainly could vote on that and, 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 you know, make a motion to to request that the things discussed, um, are included in the next application, but it doesn't need to, you know, it, I think, I think the applicant understands what the board's looking for.
Well, well, I mean, if the applicant's representative, I mean, a, a lot of times he's designed engineering contracts that, that the the applicant's engineer can speak for and act as an agent of the owner.
Right.
If that's the, that's the case, and we, we're not subject to whatever his, uh, engineering agreement is with the property owner, but I I suspect that that's the case. Um, so perhaps we could just leave it that we expect a letter with withdrawal by tomorrow or.
By tomorrow.
By tomorrow and, and, or else we'll have to convene the board with three members on Friday.
No, I mean, I could, I could verbally say that I, I, you know, we'll withdraw the forma application without prejudice. Um, and you'll, you'll have written response. You'll have a written withdrawal, um, by tomorrow.
That's great. All right.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would.
Uh, so we don't need to vo, vote on this? We will just receive the documentation?
That's correct.
All right. So then, uh, how do you close this loop now? Or is it just closed by that statement?
I think we're done. Yeah.
All right, all right. So.
You can vote to, you can vote to, um, close your, your public um, meeting, even though it's not a public hearing, if that's your, if that's your practice.
We, we do usually make a vote to adjourn, but we're going to.
We have other business.
I didn't mean to rush you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. And.
Be a part of the.
What's that?
You might, you might, or you might not want to, um, be, get in on our reorg.
You mean what you're, what, what's?
We, we are going to be reorganizing after we read our mi, uh, minutes and, um, uh, we will, uh, reshape the board in terms of the, the, um, positions people hold.
Oh, okay. Well, that's sort of outside. I would.
It's kind of late for dinner, but you might want to grab dinner.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your help.
Yeah. Nice meeting, everyone.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Um, so let's see. Um, as I remember in terms of the minutes, uh, the last minutes that we saw, there were a couple of modifications that needed to be done. And, um, I presume that Cassandra had adjusted those. Is that correct?
I did revise the two minutes that were requested to be revised. Um, so you have those two minutes before you, and then you also have your last meeting's minutes as well.
All right. Um, I took a look at them and I didn't see, um, errors. I matched them to the ones that I keep in my own, um, dictation system. Anybody else that read them?
Yeah, I did. And, um, I, I was very happy and thanks again, you know, and kind of Cassandra for, um, reworking them. They were very good.
All right. Um, so.
I'll make a motion then, uh, to ac- accept and, uh, approve the March twenty-sixth, April sixteenth and May fourteenth meeting minutes indicated on our agenda.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy, um, Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hind, aye.
Deidre Hobson, aye.
And Doug Tredvish, aye.
All right. Okay. So, um, thank you for all of that and thanks for the discussion previously. So now, um, we're going to reorganize the board. So we do this once a year and, um, uh, we have three positions that are allocated amongst ourselves. Uh, and, um, we are, um, uh, hoping that we will soon have an, an, an associate with us. Um, and so, um, I'd like to make a, um, I'd like to nominate Kevin Hind for chair of the planning board.
Hey, that's, that's great. Um, Kevin, are you up for this?
Um, you know, I feel every time I attend these meetings that I'm learning more information, um, in regard to the nuances of this. Um, I think we've got a depth of, um, knowledge with regard to the rules that um, we've revised and what has been in place for years. And, um, i- if it was the, um, the, the will of the board to, to get behind my nomination, I would accept it. Um, uh, I, I just would need to rely, and I'll just be open with this. Um, the other experienced members of the board with regard to the nuts and bolts of, um, you know, the rules and what's in front of us. Um, with regard to administration of it, um, I'd be fine with doing that. And I think that would be pretty straightforward. And I think Cassandra has, um, uh, play-by-plays and, uh, rulebooks for doing that, that, uh, she could share with me. So I'm open to that.
That's great.
I, I like the idea of meetings being.
I, I like the idea of meetings being run as efficient as possible and um, also the management of these meetings. So that, you know, we don't have meetings that are stacked up for. Real late sessions to begin with, um, so maybe it's just kind of the spreading of um. Uh, um, you know, workload around, um, as we know our meetings fill up and. You know, the truth might be, you know, applicants have to go to other meetings that we have on our schedule. Um, and just keep our meetings running as efficiently as we can, and if, if it is a purview, and I know Cassandra put together. Details with regard to a hybrid meeting, um, I think that's great and the intentions are good. Uh, I just, you know, I would not get behind any type of full uh, in-person meetings because I think that would be impossible. For um, all of us to attend, um, and, and it wouldn't afford us the flexibility to do so that we have now with hybrid, so. I just would add that as well.
Kevin, uh, if you're chair, I, I think that each of the planning board members um, can have a role in. In uh, helping you along, making sure you, you don't go down the garden path, uh, you know, for too long. Um, because there's, you know, there's a lot of legal crap that even after seventeen years, I, I don't always. If I knew it, I might have forgotten it. Um, and, and it's true of all the, the nature of each individual type of. Um, application that we have for uh, various jurisdictions. So I'll second your, I'll second your nomination.
Okay.
And Kevin, I, I, I want you to. Understand too, except for Clark and, and Amy, we're all, we're all new at this and. Nobody's an expert at this. I don't care if they've been developing and building and everything in a town. Every. Experience and new issue in, in our town is new right now. Cohasset is transforming. And we need people who appreciate where we've been. Where we would like to stay in certain parameters and where we're going without constricting people to a certain extent. And I think you understand that. Um, you know, I come from unfortunately, a husband who's been here since nineteen seventy-two, so he'll say to me, oh, my God, that's. My God, look what they're doing, and I still, but it, that is tasteful and it fits. It's not destroying the town. It's when we get to a point where we're saying, that's just taking down everything we have. You know, removing all the ledge, taking the character away from the town. You could be anywhere USA. You have been very supportive. In making sure that doesn't happen. At the same time appreciating people who come to the table with small changes and things they'd like to do to their properties. That don't deform and disfigure the town we live in. So I, I think I second or third, whatever we say at this point, your um, leadership. You also have a very good quality in how to move things forward. You know, we've talked about something long enough. And we need to move to the next place, so um, I think I would appreciate that too, and your. Uh, you, the ability you have to keep us all moving in the right direction.
Very well said, Deidre.
Um, so uh, um, let's see, let's take a vote on this. Um, uh, roll call vote. Clop, uh, Clark.
To your motion, Clark Brewer, I.
Uh, Amy Glassmore, I.
Deidre Hobson, I.
Birgit Schmidt, I.
And, and I will throw an I in there as well.
Okay, so um, so a way for this to evolve, I think, in a, in a progressive manner. That will allow us to learn from Clark because he's got seventeen years of experience. My, my view is I would recommend that Clark be the um, the assistant chair because he has been the back. You know, sort of the backstop. Certainly for me, I've learned a lot from him. And um, I think if he's willing to once again sort of play the, the overseer in the positive. Sense of how we evolve, it'll, when, when things that Kevin do- doesn't know. Clark can step in and, and make accommodations and, and suggestions. So that we can essentially learn from each other, but see it as a, a dynamic and a, and a deliberate process. So I um, uh, nominate Clark for the assistant chair of the planning board.
I second.
Before, before you vote.
Before we do all that.
I just wanted, wanted to say, um, o- over the last seventeen years, I, I've wanted to make the planning board as a professional. As, as clear-minded and, and balanced in the decisions as possible. And I, I, I came on the board and um. It, it was immediately clear that I didn't understand that. The planning board members were against master planning and planning in general. After I applied for half a dozen grants, um, gaining some of them. I, I would lie in bed at night wondering why the planning board of Cohasset doesn't care about planning. And I, it would, I'd get on one of those stuck loops like I couldn't get out of. Um, I, I've gotten out of it now. Um, I, I'm happy to um, uh. A- accept the nomination of vice chair and support Kevin's chairmanship and the, the role of the board in our community is. To be an, as effective a board as possible.
Do you think that we are planning now?
Uh, s- say that again?
Derek, so do you have the um, feeling that the planning board is coming more towards. Actually planning now than it was?
Oh, yeah, well, you know, there was, there's a whole new, it, it's a whole new uh, group of people in a, a long time. But, but again, when I first got on the planning board, I was, I was shocked that no one was interested in planning. Except for me, and it was very lonely.
Well, so maybe we can uh, um, do experiments and maybe we can look back to our um, master plan. One thing I want to recommend to Chris is that we actually, since we do have three people that have. Um, not completed a, a, a voting cycle yet, that we actually get professional training. On the basics so that you can put that in front of you every time, or however you want to remember things. So, because I think it's, it's efficient and, and it will make it us all sort of work better together. Um, so that would be something I, I would like to see, and I too would like to see more, more actual technical planning because. Um, uh, the challenge for us today is that we're too wealthy to actually get a lot of money. And unfortunately, we need a lot of money to actually finish the job. Um, so, so let's have a, a, a vote on beha- have we voted for you now, Clark? You're now.
You have not voted for me.
We have not voted.
All right, so now we're gonna do that, so um, I am uh, nominating and voting for Clark Brewer as the assistant. Chair of the planning board. Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobson, I.
And Birgit Schmidt, I.
All right, um.
Clark Brewer, I, I'll be the last.
There we go, okay. So the last position, um, uh, I, uh, I think that. Would, whi- which one of you, Birgit or Deidre, which one of you really. Are absolutely enthusiastic for that topic and feel like that's what you want to do right now?
Which one is it?
It, it was a more tedious, tedious role before we had a um, a, a planner that, that helped us with the meeting minutes. I mean, in the old days, the clerk took the minutes. So you don't have to do that.
Yeah, but, but you do, for example, I still think we need to read.
Read public.
Material that, yeah, that, that we really have to have that formulaic introduction because the public is always new and it would be good. So Deidre, I know as a teacher, you must have all of your pro- you know, spare time, no spare time. So um, that's what I was thinking. So I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna nominate.
Especially right now, I would love.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know, I know.
I really would, I just.
Yeah, so.
I know we're coming to the summer, but.
Yeah.
That doesn't end for us, so.
Yeah, so your, your turn will be soon. Uh, so then I will um, nominate Birgit Schmidt. Is it Wish?
Wish, good. You know what? We can just, you know, kind of in all these formal, um, you know, kind of Birgit Schmidt, I and so on. I can say my name, but otherwise, you know, you can just say Birgit Schmidt and that's fine because.
Okay, that, that was my, um, yep, that's fine, and it's just my very official name to, you know, kind of have this. That was my grandmother's last name.
See, here we go, Schmidt is easy.
Okay, so. I'm, did you say, did you say you nominated her?
No, he's voting.
I nominated Birgit Schmidt to be the secretary of the uh, Cohasset Planning Board.
Clerk, it's clerk, not secretary.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, please.
Do I have any choice here? Does that, what does that entail by any means? Because I'm a lousy minute taker.
No, you don't take minutes. You, you, you really only read the public notices.
And if somebody ends up.
Frankly, if you don't want to read the public notice, you could ask any of us to read it.
And that's something that if, Cassandra, if I can get it right, that's what you had been reading so far, right, at the beginning of the meetings?
I did at one point read them during the beginning of the meetings.
Okay, yeah, great, so just that I get an idea.
Not a hundred percent mandatory that you read them, even if you're clerk.
So, so we'll try it out in terms of whether you want to read it or not, and then we'll, you know, you, you'll saw, feel it and fall into place.
But you could say, no, I don't want to be clerk, and then we probably just wouldn't have a clerk.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we just got full again, so let's, let's get it all right, so.
It's just a bunch of numbers and words and.
I know, so I nominate.
I took some tuition lessons.
To be the clerk of the board, um, and I vote for her, um, then we'll do it alphabetically, Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobson, I.
Okay.
And Amy, you already said it, and, and I'm fine, yeah.
Now just turned over the board. Uh, and we have our senior statesman, our up-and-coming uh, chair. And um, the person is gonna keep um, track of everything, so that's pretty good, I think.
Kevin is chair, do, do you want to close out the meeting or?
Well, I just want to say one more thing.
Yeah, we're gonna say one more thing.
Does, yeah, does, is it okay if I ask Chris Senior to get M A P C to come in and train us? Because I know I got trained that way.
Well, we have the citizen training, um.
Yeah, yeah, but we haven't had it for like four years.
Uh, um, so typically, I think, ask Cassandra, but council can do, give us some training.
And we just, I went to that.
M A P C would cost us money, and then uh, a very efficient uh, source of training is a citizen. Um, uh, planner, training planner, like planning or training, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Can you help me out?
Well, I don't know.
Citizen planner training.
Okay, so let's, everybody agrees, we'll do it, we'll set a time when, when it makes sense, we might take. And, and I don't know how long these, I mean, Carolyn could probably give us a really good primer. Um, but then I think we might want to look at the citizens planner program as well.
Yeah.
Amy, let me say something to that, so they, that, that, that citizens planner is, it, I, Cassandra has sent me a couple of, of links to it. And I have attended a couple of those sessions and I really appreciate them, but um, it's, it's not something that you do at one time. So like you, you dedicate these sessions to um, certain subjects, to certain topics. And you choose your topic and they have a whole um, um, schedule there of what. They are going to tackle when. I don't know whether they would do anything over the summer now, Cassandra, would you know? I mean, I've, I've looked lately and there is nothing right now that they are offering, so um. They're just, you know, kind of following their schedule would be very helpful and whatever, you, you know, and kind of each of us feels kind of like not to. Secure in, in, in whichever topic to go and, and attend one of those sessions. I mean, yes, they do cost money. But it's only like thirty dollars per session.
It's not super expensive.
And then even, you know, and kind of what I also, you know, and kind of very much appreciated was a one-day um, um, planning session where they had. You know, you could go as a, as a planner and they, again, they had multiple sessions open and, and all through the day. You know, and kind of morning to sessions, even uh, afternoon to sessions and the interaction between, you know, and kind of all the other planners from other municipalities. Was extremely helpful, so I think, yeah, and kind of that way, I, I think it's going to be difficult for all of us to find something and then to. Find some topic to agree on that we want to have some help with, you know, if we just keep educating ourselves. I think that's. I, 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 otherwise it's probably not quite feasible.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's think about that in that way and um, we can report in maybe on a quarterly basis. What it is that we've done, and then when we get to a point where there's something that we re- recognize that's important. Because it's a big portion of the things we do, maybe we could ask Carolyn to give us some, you know. More detailed, finer distinctions so that we can be as effective as possible.
Could I jump in and maybe comment there? Um, so on the note of the citizen planner training. Um, there is actually an upcoming seminar, um, it sounds like it's like the bare bones basics. For new board members or building inspectors, it's called Rules and Responsibilities of Planning and Zoning Boards. Looks like they're gonna cover open meeting, public records and the contract, conflict of interest laws. It's upcoming on June eighteenth at five thirty PM and it's thirty-five dollars to register.
And where does it take place?
That's uh, I assume it's Zoom.
Okay.
I can forward that to everybody, though, but I just wanted to bring it up.
At the end of this, at the end of uh, one year, we will. Will add up who's got the most badges and they can put them on their shirt. Okay, so that's all we have to say. We have now conducted our business, we've got our notes done. Okay.
Should we, you know, and kind of so, um, as you all um, uh, noted, you know, and kind of I became the uh, full member. And I vacated my um, associate position, so um, just to, to let you know that. Um, I'm actively looking for um, an adequate uh, successor for myself. Um, and um, right now, um, we have just to wait on. Um, the actual process of how to appoint because that.
There is a process, there is a process.
And so like the process, everybody points to Lisa, um, uh, nobody wanted to take it, you know, and kind of responsibility in, in. Spelling it out, um, so she'll be back by the end of the week or the beginning of next week.
Yeah, the, the select board has to appoint the person.
Yeah, in the end it does, but.
People interested.
Very good application, that has to be filled out as well, and nobody really kind of knows and so on.
I think, you know, ideally, we, we, we'd find multiple candidates for the associate position. I know that sounds weird, but um, when, when Amy got appointed. We had, we had actually three excellent candidates at the time and um, A- Amy's uh, background. Um, was the one that seemed to have the best fit for the future of the board. So I, I would say, we, we should all try and look for an associate member and, and pick the best and the, and, and the, the, the most enthusiastic. Or whatever the qualifications are.
Is a single associate position open or is it dual associate position?
Single associate, but it's only for a year, and I believe we do a joint meeting with the select board. And the, the planning board eh, makes a recommendation and the select board votes.
Yeah, that's what happened to me.
Right, so the process would be um, Clark is correct, that it would be filling the position for. One year as an appointed official, and then they would have to reapply to the election and be elected during the next.
Right.
Election. Um, if it's the form that they need, I'm assuming it's the boards and committee form that's available online. I can send that to you, Birgit, if you'd like to forward it to anybody who may be interested. Um, that's not a problem, I can do that. Prior to Tracy comes back tomorrow, but um, it would go directly to her.
And let's talk about this again at our next meeting.
Yes, yes, okay, so um, can I get a um, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, Amy Glassmire, I.
Clark Brewer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobson, I.
And Birgit Schmidt, I.
There we go.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Night all.
Night, everyone.
Bye, thank you.